I know that many of you are here tonight to talk about the Rail Yard Project and its potential environmental impacts. And I do applaud every one of you for being here. And I do look forward to your comments. We're going to move to the public hearing on the generic environmental impact study that was done under the direction of the city council as the lead agency. Much of the work was provided, support provided by Delaware Engineering. And the project is overall being sponsored by Atsigo Now, which is the Atsigo County IDA. And they are the owners of the property in the rail yard in question here. We had a hearing two weeks ago. Tonight will be our second hearing and final hearing on the subject. Some folks spoke two weeks ago. I ask to save time that if you spoke two weeks ago, you're welcome to speak again, but there's no point in saying the same thing you said two weeks ago. It's not a good use of your time. What you stated previously was in the record already. I am going to limit, strictly limit comments to three minutes. I will ask you to end your comments at the end of three minutes. However, your written comments are welcome. They're actually requested and better than just your spoken comments. Your entire written comments will be entered into the record if you have written comments. So with that, we do have a microphone. I think, where's Rachel? Rachel is gonna...
It's this one.
Okay. Jeff, what microphone do we use?
Uh, Gary, we're gonna use the podium mic. I assume you would be sitting at your seat.
Yeah, that's fine. Yep. That'll work. When you're called upon, please stand at your seat. Rachel, bring your mic and identify yourself, name and address, and keep your comments to three minutes. I'm going to give the residents of the city of Oneonta the opportunity to speak first. So do we have any city residents who are here to speak? Yes, sir?
My name is Edward James Alamo, 3 Chester Street here in Oneonta. One of the things I'd like to answer with this new rail project and factory, are we gonna have skilled as well as non-skilled workers in the factory? And how soon are we gonna get this running?
Thank you. If there are questions, we're not going to have a back and forth answering them tonight, but we will follow up on questions to try and provide answers. Anyone else from the city of Oneonta who's here to speak? Yes, sir?
Paul Colia, Two Thorne Street, Oneonta. I'll start with a little bit of variety of things here. Anyway, I have some math that is based on what I read in a redevelopment master plan, so I got things right out of there. And I did submit a copy electronically. With prices in the mid $30,000 range, electric cars are now priced competitive with ICE cars with factoring in the cost of ICE maintenance. These vehicles have a vital role to play in converging storage of electricity when wind and solar energy are used. During the course of this railroad yard project, there will be a significant changeover from ICE vehicles to electric. New York State recently announced that it will install 200 fast charge stations across the state. I'm wondering if Oneonta is going to get one, or maybe in Atsigo County, there'll be more than one. The average size of a commercial solar install includes 2,000 panels yielding 500 kilowatts. The cover sheet in page 12 of the redevelopment master plan show four projected structures having 900,000 square feet, and they run almost perfectly east-west. Assuming the footage figures for the single storage are for single-story structures, it would allow for roughly 22 to 24 average-sized commercial installs yielding 10 to 12 megawatts. Solar panels will be 29% efficient within two to three years, as Swiss company has perfected these panels. Roof-mounted panels have no siting costs and should track the sun. To be, they should be installed to track the sun. Also to be considered is geothermal and super insulated construction. Look to work with farmers in Atsigo and Delaware County area who may have sites that are feasible for wind energy. Tap this source, which in turn benefits the farmers. Using solar and wind along with converged storage in electric vehicle batteries and perhaps molten salt batteries appears to be the future. For those unfamiliar with using electric vehicle batteries for convergence, this is how it works. Fully charged cars are left connected to the grid when not in use, and software tells the battery how much to net meter. Car owners make money off their battery packs while helping to balance the grid. There's promising news in hydrogen gas as well. There are experimentally successful solar panels geared toward creating hydrogen gas. They are now past the prototype stage and is set as installed for a full year of testing in Belgium. Designed over a 10-year period, 20 of these panels would yield enough hydrogen gas for a single well-insulated home's heating, cooling and electrical needs. This technology may be too new to incorporate unless there is a projection for it being available at a time when the railroad yard project begins. Having economically produced and stored hydrogen gas opens more doors for industrial use, which is one of the dreams for the rail yard. So down the road, there may be other spinoffs of solar that we do not yet know or envision, but it would be nice to be on track to take advantage of some of those. Worldwide, there are 500,000 solar panels being installed every day. In China, there are two windmills being installed every hour. Since 2015, renewables have outpaced fossil fuels in investments by two times. With wind, solar renewables, cost competitiveness with gas now, it makes sense, it makes no sense to continue compromising our environment with new fossil fuel projects.
Thank you. You got that exactly three minutes. You must have been timing it. Anybody else from the city who's here to speak?
My name is Art Rorick. I live in the 5th Ward. And I've looked through the latest environmental impact statement, and I see the natural gas energy usage for over 900,000 square feet of buildings proposed for the max development. And indicates natural gas usage estimate of four, well, it'd be 40 billion BTUs or 400,000 thermes at the maximum buildout. And today, our communities are more at risk of losing natural gas supply simply due to the aging gas line that exists today that feeds Oneonta that was installed in 1953 from Norwich or De Reider. This project wants to add 40 million BTUs of natural gas loading for the proposed max development. I have a real concern over the direction our city and county is taking us when it comes to this development and the whole discussion around energy supply. Instead of proposing this type of energy solution, the city and county should be promoting energy conservation, renewable energy solutions, and more efficient energy and building choices that move us away from fossil fuel energy increases to cleaner renewable and healthier solutions for our planet. I realize that this is not easy, but it has to start now. We need to be looking at, out for our community's health and the health of our planet. 400,000 thermes of natural gas is equivalent to over 2,100 metric tons of carbon dioxide emissions burnt from natural gas, equivalent to 450 cars driven for one year. However, direct methane emissions through leaks of natural gas without burning are about 25 times more powerful CO2 in terms of the warming effect on an atmosphere and planet. Therefore, I do not approve the use of natural gas upgrades or usage for this project, and we should not be building anything unless it can be built using the most advanced building and heating technologies to accommodate development for this area. Thank you.
Any other comments from the city? Bob? No, there's a mic. Bob, there's a mic coming, so why don't you wait so people can hear you?
Can I wait for the mic?
Yeah.
I didn't just raise my voice.
I wanted to state... Please introduce yourself.
Okay, I'll do this again. I'm Bob Stanton, 15 Church Street, Oneonta, New York. I was just listening to the previous comment. A new gas line and sustainable renewable energy are not mutually exclusive. We should get the gas line and get more gas available for future needs, and then still go ahead and put in the renewable resource. That's it.
The man a few words. Thank you, Bob. Anyone else from the city? Colleen?
Hi, I'm Colleen Blacklock, and I live at 46 Morgan Avenue in the city, in the 5th Ward. Am I speaking too close to the, near the rail yards? Okay? First of all, I want to say thank you so much for all of you young people coming here today, and thanks for, it's wonderful, because this really is about you. I have kids, I have teenagers, and I want a future for my teenagers, okay? And I want a future for you guys. When you, somebody here said that there's leakage from gas infrastructure, okay? And I believe it's a little bit more than what he mentioned. Gas, excuse me, I'm getting nervous because I'm off of my script. Okay, gas has methane. Methane is actually 100 times more potent as a greenhouse gas over a 10-year period, okay? Over a 100-year period, it's 36 times more potent. And it flies up into the atmosphere and adds to that greenhouse blanket. We do not want to be adding more gas capacity and infrastructure to our communities, to the US, basically. You guys are right for being here and being concerned, and you need to tell the old folks to get with it, okay? Really. And it's been shown that age is a factor here in how people view energy. The young people are interested in renewables, they're interested in having a future, and the old people are more stuck on having more gas because they don't see it as a problem. But it's a problem because there's leakage from infrastructure, gas infrastructure, and you cannot deny that. I know a lot of Democrats buy into this notion that it's cleaner. It burns a little cleaner, but it's actually dirtier altogether. So anyway, I was gonna give Steve Lundner's talk, but I didn't. I'll have to hand it in. And he wrote something about an eco-commercial park with renewable energy in the rail yards. And I wanted to say one more thing about that. That is a, it's a wasteland, that rail yards. And if you put 900,000 square feet of building over there, it's still gonna be this, this place that most of the community can't go. Maybe it'll provide a few jobs, but what if we had mixed use and an eco-commercial park that had renewable energy and we had walking spaces? And it was a beautiful place that tied together the 5th and the 6th wards. We need a revitalization of the rail yards, just like you're getting a revitalization of Main Street. And that, and the 5th and 6th wards deserve that. So I hope that all of you students who live here and are residents will also speak tonight about what's important to you. And I think not getting more gas infrastructure should be important to you because you want a future.
Thank you.
My name is Will May. I'm a student at Hartwick College. So in Washington, we have politicians like Dianne Feinstein and Mitch McConnell that'll lock their constituents out when their constituents want to talk about the Green New Deal. What we should be doing is, as a town, we should be an example of how the Green New Deal can work. We should follow the principles that it has, and we can show politicians like McConnell and Feinstein that are out of touch that, yes, it can work. And a way to do that is not building more fossil fuel infrastructure. I'll just give it to you straight. Scientists are saying we have, we have 11 years to fix this. If we don't fix it, we cannot turn, turn things around here. So what we can do with the rail yard, as well as investing in renewable energy, the transportation thing that was mentioned, we can look at bringing in Amtrak maybe, and making it so that we can travel by train more easily.
Thank you. City residents here to talk? Right down here, Rachel or somebody. Either way.
Good thing I work out, huh?
Carl Sealy, Oneonta City Resident, 5 Draper Street. Last week at the opening meeting of the County Energy Task Force, Phoebe Schreiner from the Center for Agricultural Development and Entrepreneurship talked about the potential for our region to regain its importance as an agricultural food shed. And what she keyed that to was the effects that climate change are having on the places where we get much of our food today, with water supply problems and temperature problems that are making it harder to produce food where we typically do it. She didn't say this, but what I hear as an economist is that means food is gonna get more expensive, which for us as consumers is not a good thing, but to the extent that our region can revive its agricultural productivity, that's a great thing. The more that we can produce here, if food gets expensive, we become a thriving agricultural reason, region. A piece of that is something that's actually contained in the GEIS, talking about potential use in the rail yards is food processing. If you're going to be growing more food but just shipping all of it out to New York City in its basically raw form, you're not going to support nearly as much of an economy as if you have some of the processing and value-adding activity here in the region. That takes energy. On the other hand, what was the event that she said was going to provoke the revival of agricultural importance here? It's climate change. Imagine you're living in Florida sinkhole country, and a sinkhole has opened up down the street, and it's moving towards your house at a sort of predictable rate, not entirely predictable, and you're going about just setting the table for dinner like it's a normal day. Not only you're doing that, you're planning and starting to build an addition to your house as the sinkhole approaches and is threatening to swallow up your house. The setting the table for dinner as if nothing were happening, that's what we all do on a day-to-day basis, when we just go about our lives as if nothing were happening because we don't see anything happening. Building the addition to the house, that's like building new fossil fuel infrastructure. We're not zeroing out tomorrow. We're not even zeroing out in 11 years, but as a student said, we do have to be down in 11 years. And if our course of fossil fuel use as a species is down in 11 years, it just doesn't make economic sense to build new fossil fuel infrastructure today. It can't have a viable economic payback period.
Thank you, Carl.
So I'm Mike Forster Rothbart, 34 Spruce Street in Oneonta. And I spoke two weeks ago, so I won't repeat all my comments, but just to summarize, I feel like what's really important here, no matter what gets built at this site, is to think more concretely about site design. That it's essential to consider the adjacent neighborhoods, Chestnut Street and River Street neighborhoods. We have an issue that the railroad divides our city, and so that there's not good connectivity in either of those neighborhoods, and the rail yards actually provide a golden opportunity for us to create connectivity. In specific, I'm thinking about three issues: transportation, recreation, and economic justice issues for Oneonta. Transportation, we need to think about transportation to the rail yard site and through the rail yard site. How will people, workers, customers, whatever, get to the site? If we, if they're only driving, that's gonna have a negative impact on the adjacent neighborhoods, whereas if we put in pedestrian access and bicycle access, it'll improve it for everybody. Recreation. Roundhouse Creek is actually an amazing, beautiful but overlooked feature of Oneonta. It's a little creek in wetlands that flows from Walgreens about two miles west till it goes into the Susquehanna River. It actually, it didn't even have a name until I coined the name two weeks ago. Roundhouse Creek. And economic justice, the nearby neighborhoods, the Severley neighborhood south of Chestnut and the west end of River Street are two of the poorest neighborhoods in our city, partly because they're isolated geographically. We can do something to improve that. And we want whatever's built in rail yards to improve those adjacent neighborhoods. So you'll see in this handout that I gave to you, that on page one, there's a map of potential River Street neighborhood trails. This is, by the way, an excerpt from a larger document that the Oneonta Susquehanna Greenway Committee's been working on, that features 19 possible trails for the Oneonta area. And this is just three of them that affect the rail yard. So trails, improved trails and potential access in the River Street neighborhood. In the rail yard, we need ideally a rail yard trail that connects from, say, Market Street or Neo Park all the way west, all the way to Oneonta Street. It can be like a commuter trail, it can get people downtown through the rail yard. And then a Roundhouse Creek Trail, I think those wetlands that we talked about last time are never gonna, I mean, there may be some development on the periphery, but they're never gonna be fully developed. So I'd love to see a Roundhouse Park around those wetlands with walking trails, recreational trails, and there's, as that document shows, there's about a opportunity for about three and a half miles, as I calculated it, as I walked it, of recreational trails in that area, stretching basically from Walgreens to Severley. So that's it. Thank you, and thank you all for your good work.
Okay, I think that's it for city residents. Oh, I'm sorry. What's that?
I have a letter from Steve Lundner, this is on 73 Maple Street. Steve Lundner of 73 Maple Street wrote this. A GEIS looks at intensive land use and focuses on the potential impacts of the worst-case scenario. As such, this current draft of the GEIS report offers a stark vision for the rail yard development, one totally at odds with our community's commitments to environmental and social responsibility. We know we can do much better. A well-planned, sustainable eco-commercial park would offer employment opportunities and new city revenues, along with a mix of attractive public and natural spaces. And importantly, it would attract socially and environmentally conscious businesses to our area as community members and neighbors, and expand local economic opportunities for our children. But sustainability means different things to different people. As we start down an alternative development path, we need to do the hard work of building a guiding community consensus on what sustainability should mean for the rail yards. Of course, energy issues are key. But I think the issue of maximizing the use of renewable energy may in fact prove one of the easiest to resolve, determined by science and technology and by the relevant economic and political realities. More challenging may be defining sustainability for our neighborhoods. How can a reimagined rail yards project best enhance life in our 5th and 6th wards? How can it best be linked to our downtown and to our parks? And critically, our definition of sustainability must guide a design that attracts investors. The greening of commerce in response to changing consumer demands continues to gather momentum. A sustainable rail yards eco-commercial park would be the first project in New York to offer uniquely green business locations and value propositions for investors. But the way forward can't be business as usual. Build it and enable come. It needs to be, let's work together to design and build it. Potential investors must be part of the design effort. So how do we start? We already have. This hearing advances the conversation. Now it's time to expand it. Local leaders of all stripes need to come together and guide the community to a basic design consensus for a sustainable eco-commercial park in the rail yards. Mariel Cuomo said, "There are only two rules for being successful. One, figure out exactly what you want to do, and two, do it." If we can come together and act decisively and soon, Oneonta could capture diverse first-mover advantages. We could spark the imagination of key state agencies and area universities and attract the additional resources needed for us as a community to develop this exciting alternative option. What I brought, what I brought for this evening are some papers here, just a few, but some for everybody. Took me about 15 minutes to find almost 300 companies that are committed to environmental issues and are, are invested in 100% sustainability, as well as an article written by a man named Jay Egg, who presented it at the Chamber of Commerce Energy Summit, and outlines a project much larger than this one, and its success in, in creating a geothermal 100% net zero huge campus at Stanford University. And it's, you know, we, we, it's a matter of putting our noses to the grindstone and doing the footwork, but business as usual hasn't worked before, and we have a unique opportunity here. I think we should grab it.
Thank you, Michael.
Hi, sorry to grab the microphone again. I just wanted to add for the council and for the audience members that all the trail maps are available at bit.ly/atsigo-trails. Bit.ly/atsigo-trails.
We'll open it up now to anybody else outside the city who wants to speak.
Sorry, I didn't sneak in under the city line, but so Ryan Sarasola, 138 River Street, 6th Ward. I wrote down some thoughts here. So in relation to this proposition, in relation to the rest of the downtown revitalization initiative, some thoughts here are just that we want jobs, right? Well, I don't understand why we can't get the same sorts of jobs of skilled and unskilled labor as somebody brought out, using green production rather than gas. Why are we going backwards? We want to maintain a creative culture, walking paths, green space. What's more damaging to a creative young class that you're hearing from today than investing in something that will cause more pollution, not less, and something that will not provide economic returns in the very near future, as Carl has stated? If we're going to pound down our city's roads with construction equipment, I'd like it to be for something that won't be outdated in 10 years. Natural gas is a fossil fuel that is non-renewable, and the project, as I understand it now, is a regressive encounter to the rest of the downtown revitalization initiative. Without paying attention to walking patterns that have been mentioned, green initiatives and the mindsets of cities that are looking towards the future, this, this doesn't sound as sound as an idea as we can have. Natural gas is an outstanding proposition for 1990, but it's 2019, and we need to move beyond gas.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else here to speak? Alan?
Al Kleinman, Kleinman Performance Partners. I don't know a whole heck of a lot about what's going on in the rail yards. But I am the owner of a knowledge-based business. I've spoken before the city about the issue of knowledge-based employment. I own a company with 25 employees in downtown Oneonta, a payroll pushing $1.75 million. We consume about the energy maybe of two homes. We're not, shall I say, we have a very low environmental impact. And as I observe the energy that our community and our leadership puts forth towards the industrial side of our world, I ask the question, why aren't we putting a similar level of energy towards knowledge-based businesses, which is the future of our economy? The future of our economy is not making stuff. It's learning stuff and using knowledge to improve our world. And I just ask that we put more energy towards the concept of knowledge-based businesses. I know Hartwick's president, Dr. Drogovich, will somewhat agree with me that we have upwards of 5,000 students a year, whatever, that come through Oneonta and have no real reason to stay. They're not going to stay to make stuff. They're going to stay because we have knowledge-based businesses that are going to attract what they're interested in. And yet, we don't put any energy, to my knowledge, or any near significant amount of energy towards this side of our economy. It's make this, manufacture this, big buildings consuming tremendous amounts of energy to make stuff. And it's not our future, I'm sorry. So I just appeal to our leadership to put some energy, you know, even 25% of the energy that's directed towards the industrial world, towards knowledge-based businesses, because that's where our future is. I would guess that the majority of the people in this room don't even know that our business exists. Okay? And yet, we're tremendous contributors to the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Alan. Anybody else here to speak tonight?
I'm going to be brief. But Atsigo County, lots of people in Atsigo County worked very hard to help bring about the ban on fracking natural gas. If we're building a railroad yard that's using a lot of natural gas, where even if we're not fracking here, we're pulling it from places nearby where we're polluting, I would say, let's wait as far as building stuff until we can do it in a renewable way, a more renewable way.
Thank you very much.
I live in the city of Oneonta on 37 Cherry Street. I was reviewing the GEIS draft and had a question about the natural gas. It just kind of dropped it in there that they were going to be using natural draft at the site, but there was no impact study. There was no safety study. I went through the document several times looking for it, but it wasn't there. It did say that natural gas isn't available on that site, so it would have to be transported there. How safe is that? It doesn't say. I don't know. Once it's there, it needs to be stabilized. Natural gas needs to be stabilized. I did do the research to find that out. So that might mean that we have to have a decompressor site. They're pretty dangerous. There's no impact study on that. We're in the middle of an environmental crisis. Somebody said we have 11 years. I have grandchildren. I would like to see them live out the rest of their lives. And I think we need to take this seriously. We can't just do things that could have that serious an effect on our lives, on our children's lives, and our grandchildren's lives. We need to think about when we build something new, is it going to, how does that reflect on us as stewards of this environment and this world?
Thank you.
My name is Adrian Kozminski. I'm a county resident. I just have a comment. I'm struck by the difference between the first part of this meeting and the second part of this meeting. In the first part, the discussion about the Main Street revitalization, I think we heard a very uplifting story about cooperation and consensus and unanimity and everybody being on the same page and going forward. Whereas here, it seems that that's not the case. It seems that a plan has been put forward, which has generated a lot of opposition. And it would seem that the only sort of rational thing to do in that case would really be to kind of step back, maybe table this thing as it's designed now, and include what everybody here is saying, it's some kind of a process that really addresses the concerns that have been raised here. I really wish the city would do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian.
Hello, my name is Ron Bishop. I live just southeast of Cooperstown, but I'm really not a foreigner. I'm an assistant professor of chemistry and biochemistry at SUNY Oneonta. I've been a professional chemist and biochemist for more than 30 years. I've been a hazardous materials specialist for more than 20 years of that. And an elephant in the room I haven't heard much about right now is that the rail yard is a brownfield. You have some relatively significant contamination with a number of dangerous organic compounds and some toxic heavy metals as well. And I really disagree in the most strenuous terms with some of the assessments made in the course of the GEIS that, well, it's no worse than the industrial sites next door, so I guess that's baseline for around here. That's not a good place to leave it, especially if you want to have somebody doing food processing on the place, especially if you're going to have people doing, you know, construction work, moving the soil. Because one of the greatest hazards from the particular suite of chemicals and issues that you have down there is the problem with microparticulate dust that's generated from construction. Because the microparticulate dust is a very direct means of exposure, you know, from people who live nearby. The very tiny particulates can get into the deep lung and even straight into the bloodstream without much trouble. And so people who live downwind, and with these fine particulates that can be suspended for a really long distance, downwind could mean most of the 5th ward. These are issues that you just don't want to ignore. And I think that the way they were handled in the GEIS is unacceptable and incomplete. This is not all gloom and doom. There are mitigation measures, and they don't all mean just scooping up all the soil and trucking it up, you know, trucking it away to some other unfortunate community. I'm really talking mostly about things like bio-remediation, none of which was even suggested in the document at all. So I strongly urge you to take a hard look at the fact that you have a brownfield, you don't want it to be a brownfield. When people live in there, you can really do something about it, but not if you sit on this GEIS the way it is. Thank you.
May I speak next?
You may.
Since the microphone was nearby. My name is Nicole Dillingham. I'm a resident of Atsigo County. I live in Springfield Center, and I'm board president of Atsigo 2000, an environmental and historic preservation organization that's worked in this community for almost 35 years. Let me just start by saying, this is a very seriously flawed document. It is not a GEIS that is ready for approval by the common council. Mayor Herzig, you mentioned lots of good things in the first half of this presentation. And in your introduction to these discussions, you also mentioned, "Let's make an eco-park happen, and let's worry about our environmental justice communities, and let's do things to reduce our reliance on fossil fuels." Would you believe that an eco-park isn't mentioned anywhere in the GEIS, and that in fact, the supply of fossil fuels is barely mentioned in the GEIS because it doesn't consider them? This is a ghost document. It's 113 pages long. It has headings and a table of contents, and charts, and tables, but it has no substance. It does not actually discuss the environmental impacts that this will launch on this community in any detail whatsoever. I will just focus on three principal problems. One is health impacts on the residents living nearby or potentially hiking in the area or using the creek. As Dr. Bishop has just said, this is a brownfield site. There were, at one time in Oneonta, funds dedicated to clean up the brownfield site. That has never been done. There's no reverence to it. This is a serious flaw. In addition, the wetlands, they adjoining the brownfield site that's contaminated with serious metals. As this is disturbed, not only will they be in the air, they will be deposited into the stream that flows into the Susquehanna River. We can't do this without a clear study about how we're going to remediate all of this. In addition, there is no design for the actual energy infrastructure that will be required. It simply says, the lady up above was so right. She looked through the whole document. There is no discussion about the compressed natural gas decompressor that is proposed by the very same entity that is proposing this GEIS, the Industrial Development Agency. There's no discussion in the GEIS about expansion of the DeRouyter Pipeline or all the miles of interconnections to bring this gas to the rail yard site. And there's no discussion, guess what, the decompressor station? How does that get supplied with gas? Bomb trucks, those giant trucks carrying high volumes of compressed natural gas, they're not mentioned in this document either. They're mentioned in a consolidated funding application submitted by the IDA to the state to get funds, but they're not mentioned in some, it's the same applicant, for the same region, for the same, the rail yards is mentioned in the consolidated funding application, but CNG is not mentioned here. Let me just close by saying that this city has a duty to consider the cumulative impacts of all of these developments. The only options that were considered, this gets back to not having considered an ecological park, or a park that could support knowledge-based workers. The only alternatives considered was option 1A for 10 structures, option 1B for eight structures, option 2 for nine structures, and option 4 for five structures. No alternative uses, no alternative energy supply was ever discussed. It was down to how many buildings we're going to put on it, and they chose 900,000 square feet of buildings. This is inappropriate for a city that wants to be a leader, that has hopes for revitalization, that has hopes to keep its young people in the community. We cannot do this. And when I speak of a moratorium, when I speak of a moratorium, I speak only of a moratorium on this idea, on the idea that we are going to build more gas infrastructure in our community. If you want to design an eco-park based on renewable energy, no moratorium will be needed or requested by this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nicole.
Hello, Catherine O'Donnell, town of Oneana resident. Leisure Domain, the translation from French means sleight of hand. Recently, I was at the Plains Retirement Community, talking with town of Oneana residents about their concerns regarding the proposed gas decompressor plant and tractor-trailer truck delivery of fracked CNG from Pennsylvania. I turned to the topic of the proposed rail yard development project with its mysterious gas energy source, and a woman turned to me and said, "Oh, but we don't have to worry about that because it's in Oneana." This concerned citizens' response reveals a major problem. The connection between the rail yard projects' preferred but unexamined energy, gas, and the proposed gas decompressor plant in the town of Oneana has been obscured. Gas and its greenhouse gas environmental impact are unanalyzed in the GEIS. At best, this is incomplete. At worst, fraudulent and official leisure domain. I ask you council members, Mayor Herzig, and county board representatives, from where will the gas come? The 2018 unfunded Atsigo Now IDA plan proposed a 25% increase in gas use in our area, a gas decompressor plant, and trucks bringing in fracked gas from Pennsylvania. It would involve a $17.5 million price tag for our taxpayers, an increase in the amount of greenhouse gas that we put into the atmosphere, and a cost to the community in health and safety as well. To move ahead with this project as presently conceived, while the county has just created an energy task force designed to thoughtfully chart countywide energy plans, is imprudent and irresponsible. To continue to hide the relationship and impact of the intended expansion of gas infrastructure in the town and the rail yard project is illegal segmentation and leisure domain.
I'm Jan Mulroy from the Village of Franklin. Good evening, Mayor Herzig and common council. Thank you for this opportunity to comment on the Geis for Oneana Railroad project. It is an ambitious project, and rightly or wrongly, people have high expectations for generated income for the area. Mayor Herzig calls this project a unicorn because it has access to both rail and interstate, making it useful for intermodal transportation. Unfortunately, the acres of federal and state-regulated wetlands and unremediated brownfields on and around this project's site have not been properly reviewed by developers or Delaware engineering. Possibly rail and interstate access won't be enough to save this proposal. The Geis shows sightings and a bridge in the master plan options, but content of the Geis does not reflect the building of either. Yes, it is a generic statement, but this project would not have been conceptualized if it were not for the rail access. Clearly, the Geis is incomplete. For example, input from the Department of Transportation and the Service Transportation Board might help realistically inform impacts of sightings and bridge to this site. As stated in the Geis, DNAH rail yards went into decline as train engines began to be powered by diesel rather than steam. Railroad employment declined further as the hauling of coal and oil decreased in the 2000s. In 2015, Norfolk &amp; Southern announced their acquisition of the Canadian Pacific Line that runs through an area of the Marcellus Shale and became a hauler of fracking sands to that area. While developers imagined product being exported from Oneana by rail, the Geis fails to consider the possibility of receiving imports by rail to Oneana. Norfolk &amp; Southern won't likely come to Oneana with empty cars. Norfolk &amp; Southern explains on their website, "Trains can carry the freight equivalent of several hundred trucks." They said this while stating that they offer waste transportation. They said this while stating that they offer waste transportation solutions. In 2017, Norfolk &amp; Southern moved more than 3.2 million tons of municipal solid waste, including trash, demolition debris, and industrial waste to disposal sites. Given Norfolk &amp; Southern’s relationship with fracked gas producers, I would expect that industrial waste includes drill waste from fracking operations. Trucks would then move that waste to a final destination in Otsego County. Fracking waste includes flowback fluid, which is wastewater that returns to the surface soon after a well is fracked, mostly of water, injection fluids, and chemicals. Another one is production brine or produced water, and solid waste, for example, drill cuttings, drilling muds, and sand. Isn’t it conceivable that Norfolk &amp; Southern can deliver, quote, “several hundred trucks worth of fracking waste to the rail yards to then be trucked around the county for disposal?” The impact of imports in general and fracking waste in particular has not been discussed in the Geis. I know I do not want fracking waste in or around my community. Will you commit to not accepting fracking waste at the Oneonta rail yards?
Thank you.
Hello. Keith Schu, I’m a technical advisor for Otsego 2000. I have some material I’d like to share with you if I could. I only made about five copies of this, so I’m going to give it to pairs of people. Thank you. He gave up my copy, so I hope you refer to that. Anyway, you can use this one and give it to... Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. So, Keith Schu, I’m a technical advisor for Otsego 2000. I like to talk about a lot of things, climate change and energy, electricity and gas, but what I’m going to talk about, if I can, just for a few minutes, is the wetland impacts and the site plan itself, because this does relate to what some other people were saying. Is that a little better? Okay. So, the first page that I’ve shared with you is a picture of the wetland delineates or the wetlands on the property. And as you can see, there are a lot of wetlands on this site. What you’re seeing is not only the wetland, the bodies of the wetlands, but also the wetland 100-foot buffer. This becomes important. This becomes important in terms of ecological protection, protection of water quality of the wetlands. It’s not just the value of the wetlands itself, but that buffer becomes incredibly important. And when you’re designing a system, when you have buildings that are on a site, you have to provide for stormwater retention, and that’s going to be landward of the wetlands, and it should be landward of the buffer to the wetlands too. So those are things that really have to be planned for as part of a site development. And this is, when you look at this particular property, you’re seeing some particularly concerning constraints. And one of them is that stream that has been mentioned. It moves from east to west on the property. This becomes important because of the historic use that’s happened on this piece of property. As Dr. Ron Bishop has said, this is a brownfield, okay? There’s been toxins in the soil, the creosote, all the stuff that went into the rail yard development. You’re seeing remnants of that in the soils on this property. And so if you have earth-moving equipment coming in, you’re churning up the soils, you’re liberating some of those toxins into the air and into the, under the surface of the land as well, and then it rains and it gets flushed into the neighborhoods, gets flushed into the community, gets flushed into the Susquehanna. That’s a concern. And it’s particularly a concern with this particular site plan that’s proposed because when you look at the next page, which is the preferred alternative, you’ll see that there’s just no place to do the proper amount of stormwater retention that you’re going to need to do on the site to do it correctly, to protect the community, to protect the environment. And so what I would suggest to you is that instead of that preferred site plan, I think some good things have been said about the value of having an eco-park, you’re not going to get an eco-park with that site plan. It’s, you know, the engineering term is trying to put 10 pounds of doodoo into a five-pound bag, except the word’s not doodoo. And so that’s kind of what’s going on here. I’d recommend that you look at the other, one of the other alternatives that you did identify, which is alternative number four, and that’s on, that’s further down if you flip the pages a little bit more. That one has a little bit less square footage, but it’s protecting the integrity of the wetlands. It’s giving you a chance of actually designing the type of water retention, detention system that you’re going to need to protect this environment, to protect the community that surrounds it. You know, I guess one last thing I would say... So anyway, first, I would hope that this board could take upon itself to decide that the preferred alternative was the wrong one and to go back and look at number four, because I think that’s a starting point toward making the right, the right start, set of decisions toward the eco-park that people want. One last thing I want to say about the site plan is, where’s the power plant? When you look at the Geis, there’s discussion of electricity that might be produced with CHP or something on the site. When you, when you look at the IDA minutes that we’ve seen, there’s discussions with conversations with the General Electric to put something here to produce electricity. It’s kind of hard to hide a power plant on, on a site plan, but somehow you did. I don’t see it here. So if you’re, if there’s going to be something like that considered, it’s got to be on the picture, and I think it’s got to be analyzed and discussed in the content of the document too. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Jim Boothman, and I am a professor at Heartwork, and I teach political science and environmental policy. Specifically, my focus is energy policy. So frankly, I’m an academic and not an activist, but I think almost everybody under 25 years old here tonight came with me, and, except for Will, who came on his own, but he’s still one of my students. And I think that you all need to, you know, energy issues are divisive, and there’s problems with natural gas. We know that. We know that we have promises of great renewable energy for the future and technology and all of those things, right? And that is in the future. I think you do have to recognize that we need and want these young people to have opportunities and to want to be here. Right now, I’m writing a paper about local governments, city and local governments that have taken renewable energy seriously, and they are the cities of the future. And there’s three that have relied completely on 100% renewable energy, and there’s 70 that have promised to. And the only way that for the future, and again, looking around the audience, nothing against all of us, but most everybody else that is young, not all of you, but most everybody else is one of my students, and they were here, and I apologize that some of them left early, but they were here for an hour and a half, so that’s pretty good. So anyway, I want to encourage you to, whatever your decision, and again, I’m fairly agnostic about it, but I think that relying on the expansion of natural gas will divide the community more. And that’s as a political science scholar, and that I think that you should consider what young people want, and young people really are looking for renewable energy and for clean opportunities. And the world will be moving in that, in that direction. And so as my friend Ryan said, you know, I mean, looking into the past is one way to do it, and I think it’s hard. I think it’s hard, but I think to be a leader, Oneonta could be. I think it’s positioned to be a leader in so many ways, and most of it relates to the environment. And so I hope you seriously consider this because it will make Oneonta distinctive, in my judgment, to offer something that is a little bit different than the same, same old way. So anyway, that’s, thank you. And thanks to all of my students for coming.
I live on South Side Drive, and I wanted to talk about something in the Geis. The draft Geis repeatedly states that the rail yard redevelopment project would create new jobs and add to the local tax base. The section titled Economics and Employment states, quote, “A site-specific economic analysis on potential impacts to property tax revenue was not completed for the purpose of the DGIS. However, a positive impact is expected.” How is it possible that the Otsego County IDA, the purpose of which is to advance job opportunities and economic welfare, has not conducted an economic analysis for a project of this scale? The entire stated goal for the project simmers down to economic growth, and yet the DGIS rests on the assumption that after huge amounts of resources are spent for the expansion of utilities such as sewer, water, electric, and gas, road installation, maintenance, fire service, wetland and soil impacts, that the city of Oneonta is going to come out on top in a better fiscal position with many more jobs. This is a very risky assumption and one that should not be made. I’ve given you all a copy of the most recent New York State Comptroller’s data for the 12 Southern Tier IDAs, which documents the number of projects, the costs, the tax exemptions, pilots, along with job creation. Three of the IDAs didn’t report any projects, so I have not included them in there. I have excluded Tioga County’s data from my calculations. They are off the charts, but I have left it in the packets for reference. That leaves eight IDAs, including Otsego County, which I have placed on top for easy reference. The remaining seven IDAs are in alphabetical order. I’ve also included a glossary of terms in the back that you can reference to understand how each category was calculated. Sorry. This is a little dull, I know. If you look at, but it’s very important. If you look at the Otsego County IDA’s data, you’ll see they have 11 projects worth roughly $85 million. The estimated jobs to be created were 162. The estimated net job change, which means the actual jobs created, was 29. So 162 versus 29, that’s less than one-fifth of the jobs the Otsego County IDA said that they would create. The net tax exemptions per job gained was $42,943, so roughly $43,000 in tax breaks for every job created. The expense per job gained was $33,000. To put this into perspective, take a look at the other seven Southern Tier IDAs. The estimated jobs totaled 11,474, and the jobs created were 11,238. So as a whole, they came very close to reaching 100% of the jobs promised. They produced 98 out of every 100 jobs promised, whereas Otsego County IDA produced 20 of every 100 jobs promised. Further, every county individually produced many more jobs compared to Otsego County. The lowest job producer was Delaware County. They created 154 jobs, more than they estimated, and yet they still produced more than five times the jobs compared to Otsego County at 29 jobs. But here’s what’s really incredible. The seven county IDAs combined gave net tax exemptions per job gained of $14,512, whereas Otsego County IDA gave $43,000 alone. So seven counties combined gave 1/3 of the tax breaks per job compared to Otsego County. The average tax exemption per job by the seven counties was $2,073 compared to Otsego County at $43,000 per job. Expenses per job gained was a similar story. The seven county IDAs combined spent $13,628, whereas the Otsego County IDA spent $33,483 alone. Seven counties combined spent roughly 2.5 times less compared to Otsego County alone, and each of the seven counties individually produced many more jobs than Otsego County. The lowest job producer was Delaware County at 154 jobs compared to Otsego County producing only 29 jobs. Based on the Otsego County IDA’s dismal track record, I’m requesting that the city council, as lead agency, as representatives of the taxpayers of the city, and as being solely responsible for the final Geis, no matter who prepares it, insist on a full economic analysis of the rail yard redevelopment project, all 200 acres, which breaks down the costs, who will bear those costs, the basis for the projected job creation, and justification on how the site will actually be filled. I also request that a new draft Geis be issued after addressing this issue and the many other flaws and omissions in the current document. Thank you for your consideration.
I live in Otego, and I came here as a college student almost 30 years ago and fell in love with the city of the hills. Although we have since moved to Otego, our family travels in and out of the city almost every day of the week, and the bulk of my salary is spent here. As my children, the only other people in the room, I think, are younger than the college students, are reaching their driving ages. And as they reach driving age, it’s very concerning to read about the potential rail yard development when there’s been no proper planning for safe traffic management. This GEIS, under consideration by the city council, does not adequately address the issue of truck traffic, some of which may be carrying compressed natural gas in and around the city and in the Town of Oneonta. On Sunday, one of these top heavy vehicles flipped on IEDA in Cobleskill, causing homes to be evacuated and shutting down the interstate, not the vehicles we want on our local roads. Although there are some circumstances in which the lead agency may segment an environmental review, the city has not established that this is one of them, and I have the DEC citation in the document. As you know, NICEG is also proposing the DeRyder 12-inch upgrade, which the IDA has said is related to the Oneonta railroads, rail yards. Both rail yards, development, and the pipeline are related to the IDA’s decompressor proposal. The proposed decompressor plant at Pony Farm or in the rail yards, the heavy industrial development at the rail yard, which would include costs and service demands of the town, energy demands on a region with constrained resources, tractor-trailer traffic through the town to supply CNG and additional trucks for shipping, none of these have been considered, and no reason has been given to justify the segmentation. Therefore, this Geis has failed to satisfy legal requirements by not including the Town of Oneonta or County of Otsego as stakeholders. As has been mentioned here earlier, at the Chamber of Commerce Energy Summit in January, Mark Davies of the Environmental Board shared the vision of an eco-park for the rail yards. At that same summit, geothermal engineer Jay Agg encouraged the county, the towns, and the city to pursue community geothermal solutions for our energy needs. We have an opportunity to build a future which will continue to attract young people to our city and our colleges. As a mother living in this area, I ask that you read your own codes and comprehensive plan and listen to all the folks in the room tonight, and maintain a city of the hills, which is a forward-thinking, healthy, sustainable community where our children will want to settle to raise their own families. At a minimum, this environmental impact statement should indicate that it will comply with the New York State’s climate goals and the constraints imposed by a warming planet. A Geis which leaves the door open for increasing dependency on fossil fuels steals the future of the planet from our children. I urge the city to reject this flawed Geis.
My name’s Dennis Higgins. I did speak at the last hearing, and I will not repeat any of those remarks, but I will submit what I have to say electronically. I have comments that address the failure of the Seeker and DGeis to provide greenhouse gas emission estimates, the appearance of illegal segmentation, the impacts of industrial build-out, which have been conveniently omitted from the DGeis, and I provide citations for those things from the DEC. The county has embarked on a regional energy review for which dozens of capable, well-intentioned people have been recruited. I hope their recommendations will come from even-handed, science-based considerations, and I believe for now we must give the county task force the benefit of the doubt. Meanwhile, the IDA is talking to GE about turbines and considering drafting an RFP for a power plant in the rail yards. We might conclude from this that the county task force and the IDA have each left the other in the dark, except that Mr. Zakrefsky of the IDA is part of that county task force. You’ll recall the IDA pulled a similar stunt last August, proposing a $17.5 million decompressor, which would be fueled by dozens of CNG tractor-trailers daily. Just like... which would be fueled by dozens of CNG tractor-trailers daily, just like the dozens that have had accidents, been vented, or flipped over in Otsego County, just like the rollover that my wife mentioned that caused evacuations and shut down I-88 a few days ago. As far as I can tell, neither the town nor the city are zoned for a gas plant. Town and city have formulated comprehensive plans to protect residents' health, quality of life, and the environment. The IDA sought no public input for its decompressor proposal and seeks no input for its current power plant venture. Yogi Berra would say it's like déjà vu all over again. Whether the efforts of the IDA are censured or sanctioned by the county task force, whether the plans for the gas, for a gas plant move forward, turning the county effort into a time-wasting farce remains to be seen. But it is in part up to you people here. A power plant or a decompressor in the rail yards would be financed with our tax dollars. The public would suffer the traffic, noise, lights, and stench. Volatile organic compounds, particulate matter, ozone, and other toxic pollution would be carried by prevailing wind into the city. Will you consider the governor's greenhouse gas reduction goals, his plan to achieve net-zero carbon electricity from load-serving entities by 2040? Will you consider the constraints imposed by climate change? I hope you will pursue environmentally sound, sustainable development which protects citizens' health. Thank you.[1203.83][1203.83](APPLAUSE)
Hi, my name is Siobhan Higgins. I'm 16 years old. Both of my parents just spoke, and as has been mentioned before, young people want to see renewables. We don't want more gas in our community. We want renewable energy used for growth. Thank you.[1231.75][1231.75](APPLAUSE)
I thank everybody for, do we have somebody else? Wayne?
I'm Don Havert. I'm a Franklin resident, and I think we all realize that whatever happens in Oneonta is going to have a large effect on the surrounding counties, and so Franklin is also concerned. The Oneonta rail yard is a brownfield site, as stated. It's got a history of a rail transportation hub, shipping and receiving of freight storage, steam engine repair center, coal storage and distribution, even pesticide distribution. In addition, as has been mentioned, there's the natural drainage pass that comes right through in the wetlands in that side of the park. So developing the rail yards, as we said, will have many challenges, and these must be subjected to a timely, in-depth, and thorough GEIS. Obviously, this one is not. It must address all the impacts of the development at the site, adjoining areas in the wetlands, things like the traffic to and from the site, choice of the utilities, the energy sources, and the runoff water. The state environmental quantum review must also be related to these same issues for the same areas. You cannot separate the downtown rehabilitation incentive, the Pony Farm crossing, industrial park, and the railroad yards. They're all related, and the review should take effect cumulative traffic, energy usage, and development needs like that. Otherwise, you do get segmentation, as already been mentioned. The Oneonta rail yards, however, is a prime expansion area, and probably the only one remaining for Oneonta, and that's 16, 60 to 80 to 100 acres, depending upon which plan you can look at. There's room enough there to allow for open green space, ponds, waterways, walking trails, bike trails. It's close to downtown, if you consider some sort of a walkway like's been suggested, and to the other neighborhoods, if you have any kind of interchanges. And of course, one advantage is it does have rail access. We can debate whether that's an advantage or disadvantage, but right now, it has access. So the city of Oneonta will make choices in developing the rail yards. These will affect Oneonta and the surrounding areas, and they will affect it for a long time into the future. You have many options. I'm going to just talk about two quick ones. Option number one, which hasn't been mentioned tonight, and I hope you don't look at it, traditional development. Continue doing what we've been doing for the last 150 years. Do what we've always done. The option I think that makes more sense, that has been mentioned, and it could be modifications or similar, but build the first eco park in New York State. You can be a leader, you can be a model for sustainable development, zero net energy, zero net emissions. You can construct buildings to lead. You can take and provide electricity with renewable solar, wind, and battery storage. You can heat and cool with geothermal. You can provide parking areas that have recharging stations for electric vehicles. You can incorporate public transportation as well as the walking paths. You can collect surface runoff into rain gardens and things that are being promoted now. All of these can be done. So I appeal to you, this is a one-time opportunity for the city. You have a chance to get it right. You can create a future. You can leave a lasting legacy for generations. You can build something that other municipalities can come and look at, admire, and duplicate. I implore you to please look at option two, and we owe that to our children and our children's children. Thank you.[1489.53][1489.53](APPLAUSE)
I think everybody who came to speak has had an opportunity. I do want to ask Mary Beth Bian, am I missing somebody?
Seth.
Seth, sorry. Go ahead, Seth.
My name is Seth Clark. I live at 168 East Street in the city of Oneonta. Rarely do I have an opportunity to piss off this many people at one time, so I just couldn't help myself. I want to remind people, I've lived, I'm 52, and I've lived in Oneonta most of my life, off and on. I want to remind people of a couple of things. One is, Oneonta used to have a hell of a lot more industry than it does now. It used to have a diaper factory, which was 150 jobs. It used to have the Seño Coat Factory, which I believe was 100 jobs. It used to have a hospital that you could actually show up pregnant in, and they would deliver the baby. You can't do that anymore. Probably some jobs lost there. We used to have not one, not two, but three schools, the Center Street School, Bugbee, and St. Mary's in the Center City area. Now we have no schools in the Center City area. And I've been studying the issue of poverty lately in town, because it's very interesting, and the numbers are very interesting, and I'm going to play a little bit with garrulous numbers. 38% of the people in town live below the poverty line. But that doesn't mean that 38% of the children in town live below the poverty line. And actually, the real number of children living below the poverty line is closer to 50%. Whenever you have a high poverty number like that, it tends to disproportionately affect kids. And it's just, that's the way it works out all across America. At one of the elementary schools here, there are 47% of the kids are on the free or reduced lunch program. And that means that half of the people in that school district can't afford to feed their kids. So I don't know anything about an eco park. I have not my area of expertise, but I want to invite the council to keep your eyes on the prize, which I think you're doing a really nice job with. We need jobs. We need hundreds and hundreds of jobs, and, you know, it's absolutely great if we can do that in a way that is environmentally sustainable, okay. But let's not forget that what we owe our children is not just a future. We actually owe them a hot meal a couple of times a day, too, and that is not happening in Oneonta in 2019, and people ought to be, I don't know, it's a statistic that blows my mind, and hopefully, you know, it makes some of you guys think, too. So that's all I have to say.[1718.41][1718.41](APPLAUSE)
Thank you, Seth. We're not going to have any repeat comments because it's getting late. I do want to give Mary Beth Bianconi of Delaware Engineering an opportunity. Mary Beth, anything you want to say to wrap it up?
Written comments are to be submitted by March 18th, please. Information for how to submit is on the city website. You can do them by email, mail, drop them off at the city, but please submit written comments by March 18th.
With that, we're going to close this hearing. I want to thank everybody for coming out. All of your comments will be part of the record, and all of your comments and concerns are very much appreciated. Thank you.[1774.13][1774.13](MUSIC)